We will open tonight with an invocation. Jordan, would you say that? And then the pledge of allegiance. Jen, would you lead us in that?
Yes.
Our Father in heaven, we gather together grateful for the opportunity we have to have such a beautiful city. And for the opportunities that our citizens have. Please bless us as elected leaders that we can be able to listen to those we represent and to represent them as best as we can. We are grateful for the opportunity we have to serve and ask for thy wisdom as we go through the agenda and look at these different decisions and choices that we can be granted with thy wisdom. We are grateful for the rain we've received over these past few weeks. Please continue to bless us with an abundance. And please, most of all, bless each of our, of the citizens of the city that they can be prosperous and taken care of. And this we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. The next portion of our meeting is public comment. Uh, this is your opportunity to bring any concerns um that you'd like to forward. This is limited to three minutes. Okay. Uh, Jordan would like us to adopt the agenda, so.
It's just in the order.
Why don't you make that motion?
Uh, I move that we go ahead and uh adopt the agenda for tonight as listed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we'll go that passage unanimously. But we'll now move on to public comment. This is limited to three minutes. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So uh, this would be your opportunity now to speak on an item as we get into the items of the agenda. Uh, there will not be further comment.
At the end.
Hey, seeing none, I will close public comment. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have minutes for June twenty seventh and July eleventh. Would someone like to make a motion or is there anyone who has a concern with the minutes as posted?
I move that we approve the minutes as outlined in three A and B.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have some items of consent. These are items that have already been discussed and or are items of uh routine maintenance. For example, the first item is uh authorize the administration to execute an interlocal agreement for school resource officers in Syracuse City. This is something that we do every five years and is just a continuation of a current program. Item B is proposed ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, amending Syracuse City Code dash or section three dot five oh dot oh two oh related to the disaster preparedness committee. We spoke about this in our last meeting. And so this would be a uh approval of what seemed to have consent. Item number three would be uh consent to approve appointing Micah Redman to that new position that we've talked about as the public information specialist for the disaster preparedness committee. Does anyone have any item or issues with those and would like to take them off for discussion?
The only, Mr. Mayor, the only question I had was I was just kind of cursory uh reviewing the school resource officer one. And I just didn't see, what is the reimbursement? Just a question, what the reimbursement uh was from?
We can take that off for discussion if you'd like.
No, I just was wondering what the number is. That's it. I don't, I'm not uh.
And we'd have to ask. Uh, okay, so let's remove A. Does anybody have an issue with B or C? Okay, can I get a motion to uh accept or to approve those two?
Motion to approve the other two, B and C.
Motion by Seth, seconded by Jordan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two pass unanimously. I'm gonna ask uh Chief, could you come forward and discuss item A with us, the school resource officer? And I do not know if you have the answer. We did not ask you to be prepared for that. But if we're gonna have a discussion, you'd be the best resource.
Mayor, it's not, it's not a strict reimbursement based on what we pay. Uh, the school district has a formula. My recollection of this is that every agency that has school resource officers, you submit their salary amount to the school district. Then the school district puts that together as an average and then pays nine twelfths of that back to the city. Basically nine per, the other three months of the year, they would say that they're not assigned to the school. So.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Alright, so I'll take a motion to approve the school resource officer.
Still moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Um, on the next couple of items, let me just uh be clear. Counsel, I know that you're well aware of some of these issues, but I've had a lot of calls after our agenda was posted, so I want to clarify a few for the public. This next item is to accept or deny a petition. Twenty twenty-three dash oh two requesting annexation of one hundred and twenty-nine point four nine six acres of property on three thousand west between seventeen hundred south and twenty-seven hundred south. This is just a motion to accept a petition. We're not discussing whether we will um whether we will annex or not, that will be a future meeting. I just want to be clear that there's a lot of details that will come forward with other parts of this application, but right now the action in front of us is within fourteen days of receiving an application. We are to accept or deny the petition, and that's all we're doing tonight. Any questions, counsel?
Nope.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the annexation petition. Uh, twenty twenty-three dash oh two, request the annexation of one hundred and twenty-nine point four nine six acres as listed on the agenda. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is accepted and that petition will be active and followed through. Uh, item number six is authorize administration to award contract for Shoreline Trail Phase One project. Does anybody have any discussion on this item? Robert's here to answer questions if we need.
Oh, I think it was outlined well in the packet and excited to get this trail going.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Um, well, hold on, let me make sure I have the we need to list the name of the company that was selected.
I don't think so. It's just authorized.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Maybe I missed in there. I didn't see where the additional funding is coming from.
Almost a hundred thousand that we need to budget back in because it it came to three, the low bid was three ninety-three. And you know, which is half what some of the other bids were. Um, but still we're ninety-three thousand short. Do we have ideas of where that will be added from?
Is that from that where Syracuse City obtained one hundred and fifty in grant funding through UDOT's tap funding to put towards this project?
Those are one hundred and fifty each, and that comes to the three hundred thousand. Okay, where those are coming from.
Oh, so it's okay.
Yeah.
So, Robert, would you address the question seem to be centered around where the funding is coming and which price we're going with?
Yeah, so we have currently budgeted three hundred thousand in the current budget, one hundred and fifty from park impact fee and one hundred and fifty from the UDOT grant. Uh, this, the low bid turned out to be three hundred ninety-three thousand one eighty-seven, so there is a ninety-three thousand dollar uh um shortfall, but we do have money in the park impact fee fund. Um, it would just have to be um reopening a budget opening later in the year and Rick and uh.
So counsel, any further questions?
So then it would just come from the impact fees from?
We would have to authorize that or find another source at a future meeting.
That's what they're there for.
Impact fee, if you don't use it, will end up going away.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And we also should note that a lot of that is inflation from two years between the two.
Yep.
That's all.
Yeah, so I'm feeling like there's a little bit of consensus here. Can I get a motion to authorize administration to award the contract?
I move that we authorize administration to award the contract for the Shoreline Trail Phase One project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number seven is proposed ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen adopting the Syracuse or adopt adopting the Syracuse twenty-five hundred west community reinvestment area. Counsel, just on this, we have visited with many of the taxing agencies and already have approval. We do not have a hundred percent so far, but we have been scheduling those meetings and moving forward. We felt that this time it's best to make sure our own council approves of this taxing reinvestment area so that uh we don't have a situation where we didn't agree with our own plan. So uh Noah, would you uh just briefly outline what we're doing here? And tonight, by the way, we are uh just talking about creating the zone. I've had several people reach out to me either online or in email asking if any of the plans within this area are final. They are not. They are all proposed at this moment hypothetical and could change drastically. All we are doing tonight is establishing the area that will in be included in this zone should we adopt it. Noah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, so we, we did send out a letter about a month ago and and so I have also received a lot of questions about that and we want to be make sure we can answer any questions and uh be transparent about what we're doing here. So the, the goal of this is to create a tax increment area. So this is not approving any specific plan. It's not approving any specific road layout or any specific project is what it is, is the property taxes from the taxing entities like the school district, the county mosquito abatement sewer. Uh, they're agreeing to redirect some of their property tax towards the city RDA. That now this does not include the existing residence property taxes. It doesn't have anything to do with the people that live there. Uh, the project area goes along the roadways in a big square uh just so that tho- those funds could be used within that project area on on infrastructure and roadway and and the goal is to attract economic development and uh hopefully some jobs and uh economy strengthening things.
I will clarify that what we've presented to the other taxing organizations is that we're seeking funds just to help with the initial infrastructure. Because uh because one of these roads that is going to be the primary access off one ninety-three is a UDOT road and built at a different standard than the city would require. There is going to be some unusual costs that would be hard for any first business to absorb. And so the purpose of the CRA is that we can get some funding from the taxing agencies that we can put back into this so that we create an area that is tax positive. Right now, with most of the area in this area uh tax-free due to nonprofit status and the rest at A1, most of this is producing no tax dollars to any of these taxing agencies. Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none?
In there?
Yes.
Um, I believe there was a note um to the council in the RDA. Um, noticing we had um we're missing a couple noticing requirements. So this, the staff was going to be recommending that we continue this matter to a later hearing or meeting.
Okay. Um.
To put it correct, right? Make sure everything's correct.
Alright, that's fine. We can do that.
Uh, my hearing recommend table?
Yeah, recommend table so that we can just redo our noticing.
Okay.
Again, this area, all we're doing is establishing the area, but.
Uh, well, let's make sure we get it right. And so if that's the case, I recommend that we table item seven. Until a future agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number eight is discussion and possible vote of proposals for operation in the Syracuse Museum. If you will recall, counsel, uh about a month ago, we met in a work session and discussed many options for the operations. Uh, we brought forward that while reading the duties of the curator, because we will be replacing the curator very shortly. We realized that in the code, there were parts of operations that we were not following. So we came to you for your advice. After that meeting, the staff felt that we didn't have clear direction, so we sought to get clarity on what our options are with uh the museum foundation board members who have currently been acting in most of the operational capacities. We have some possible ideas here. We are open to discussing any and all of those possibilities. And if you would like, we can make a motion to move forward with one or a new possibility. Who would like to begin discussion on this point?
Well, I think I, I'm good to take a stab at at least kicking off a little bit. Um, because it uh was kind of piecemeal coming in and and a little bit later. Would it be uh possible if Bree, you could walk us through which of the attachments that are in the um packet here are kind of or maybe just help us understand those a little bit because some of them seem to actually go together and some of them actually are completely separate.
Sure, so there depending on the direction council wants to go with the museum foundation and if the council were to repeal the um ordinance altogether, then I think having a MOU or some kind of agreement would be a, an advisable um thing to have in place between the city and the foundation for the use management and operation of the museum. If um that's not the direction council wants to go and we just want to make sure we account for providing a curator position, there's an agreement for the placement of that uh curator in the museum as well. Um, there's also the option um that in the packet um that just changes the ordinance a little bit to account for possibly making the foundation the board. And then there's also the option for the advancement board. That was a very quick overview. Do you have very specific, do you have any specific questions? So the, the MOU that I drafted um is just a starting off point. If there are any provisions in there that the council would like to change or re address or organize, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Um, so from where I'm sitting, I think um what I would, what I would hope to accomplish is the same thing I said last time we, we discussed this was that uh I, I don't feel comfortable adding a, a second board. I'd like to just leave it as the foundation that operates the day-to-day everything um which I think would entail repealing the ordinance as it sits and then outlining the, the rest of the roles uh with a little bit more work, I think that needs to occur after this meeting on the MOU, which would include the curator position as a consultant. Um, and then outlines the relationship with us on the property, the maintenance, the insurance. Um, and then a, a role for a council member possibly. I think, Jordan, you would, you would kind of talk to me about that a little bit. But yeah, just leaving it uh pretty simple. So that's kind of where I, I'm at.
One discussion I want to have is I, I do feel where the city is a substantial contributor to the museum. Yes, I would like to see on, I, I agree, we don't need to board. That's um superfluous. I think, but I do feel like we owe it to the voters to have um with the city's contribution of that exceeds over a hundred thousand dollars um per year, especially once you include the curator. I do think we need to have someone on the board. And I would almost um a- as we talk about the curator, though, I do think we need to discuss as we start outlining. I noticed one of the items in the the MOU would be um for hours. So I, I need to understand that um if we're having a full-time curator, we do need to expand the hours of the museum. That I would expect a full-time curator to have the museum open a lot more than it currently is, especially on Saturdays when a lot of people would be willing to go. So I'd like to see that clarified. That makes sense?
Museum usually is open. It's usually closed Sunday and Monday.
How many total hours is the museum open? Were we ballpark?
I don't know, since Liz has left, I would have to, I would have to ask.
The report that we have is that the museum is currently open twenty-five hours a week. I don't, not, that's just a report I have.
So that sounds a lot like a part-time curator.
So I think the issue comes when you start to require foundation volunteer members to be there for certain hours. And I think that's not in line with what we do with volunteers. I think if we want to expect the curator to be there for certain hours, that's one thing, that's a job.
Totally agree.
But I think once we get into stepping on the toes of the people who are volunteering their time, that's when I'd say we don't that the day-to-day operation should be decided by the actual foundation board. Um, but we can require the curator to be there. We can talk to them and that can be part of the discussion, but it can't be a requirement for the foundation.
Agree then. I'm just saying if it's only open twenty-five hours a week, that's just a part-time curator, though.
Well, that's, that's.
Well, they do a lot more than.
I was gonna say, it's not just the open hours.
Visiting during the open hours. They work a lot during the closed hours rearranging things and because that ultimately falls on them. It's not, uh, there's only so many volunteers there and they do a heck of a job. But if it still has to get done, it's still has to get done, you know, so they're, they're still there.
Well, and I see, I do understand.
I went by for a, for a, a meeting and they were all there uh working, you know, so there were several members that were foundation volunteers putting together displays and, and
A heck of a.
cutting things out of picture frames and putting them together. And so um I would say just because we're sa- saying this is how many hours they're actually open to the public does not mean that's how many hours the curator is working.
I agree. I just, I, I'm gonna say, I'll just, I'm, I'm partly selfish in this. As long, I've only been to the museum once because it's not open anytime I'm ever at home. Uh, usually I'm home on, you know, evenings and Saturdays. And for the longest time it was open neither of those times.
You want to hear something awesome? There's a phone number you can call that they'll open it specific if you ask them to. And it's on the door.
I understand that. But I guess what I'm hoping to do is make it a little more accessible to the citizens of Syracuse. I, I understand that you could call in and that they'll, someone will come over and open the doors for you.
They'll set it up on your time sometimes.
Set it up.
And yeah.
But I would like to see it just, I, I'd like to be able to stop by and I haven't been able to do that.
Well, I think that's absolutely something that can be a discussion with the foundation boarders or also with the curator when we get them hired and, and going. I think every day, though, that we let this go without resolution is a day that we can't open the museum because there is no curator because they have, they have resigned. So um, we have people who are waiting for us to, to get this taken care of. So that's why I'd like to push to have this voted on and have the proposal set tonight. Um, but I do think when we talk about, I, I agree that any second committee or board is, is redundant. And it adds a layer of bureaucracy. Anytime you have one more layer for anybody to go through, I disagree with that on principle. Now, some things have to be done that way. This is not one of those things that needs another layer, layer of bureaucracy or appointment or go through another channel. We are so fortunate, and I want to be very clear, how incredibly fortunate we are that I'm looking at people who don't even necessarily live in our city and they are willing to cross city, several city borders in order to serve the people of Syracuse on their dime, on their, using all of their energy and resources to bless us. I will go out in flames if it comes down to saying we don't appreciate you so much to, we're, we're, we're going to make it so hard for you to volunteer that we're going to add another level of bureaucracy and another, another level for you to have to check with us to see if you're the day-to-day people, you are the foundation volunteers. And there has never been a person who has contacted me in the nearly five years I have been on the city council and said, I would love to be a volunteer at the museum. Can you please appoint me to this position? Not once have I had somebody ask me for that, for that opportunity. We have people willing to do this and they do it beautifully and, and consistently and responsibly. This is not a power play and it should never become a power play and it should never be anybody especially in leadership position, making it more difficult for people to serve our city. So I say no second committee or board members or, or board appointments. We can increase it. We can add, uh, we can in- increase some of the positions of the board, but it would be the foundation that approves that. And we've already written into this that they have to have the, the second ordinance says that they would need to have um expertise in some of these areas. Everybody on this board has expertise. I wouldn't dream of saying that unless you have a, a, a degree in finances, you can't volunteer or be appointed to this board or, or be part of this. So so my, my list is day-to-day operation is decided by the actual volunteers and foundation board members. It should not be going through us. The curator is our responsibility. We hire them. We, we can remove them if, if needs be. We work with them to say what the uh, what we require from them and what we would like them to um continue to do in our behalf and what we would like to see progressing in the city museum. Um, when we talk about the money that we're giving to the museum, let's keep in mind that this isn't a, this isn't a gift that we're bestowing on these volunteers. They're volunteering to give a gift to us. Us letting them use a museum and a building that the city owns is nonsense to suggest that that's some great bestowal on them. What they're doing is they're working it for us. They're the people working the store for us. So anyway, to, to sum up, no new committee, no new board. Foundation takes care of the day-to-day operations, including the hours that they're open, depending on what they're able to do. We can talk to the curator about anything we'd require them to do. And we can increase the board if they, if the foundation would like that and we can um publicize it through the city and, and make a notification, uh, put that out. But we will not be the ones appointing anybody. As far as I'm concerned, those people who are there day-to-day have every right to decide who is going to be on that board.
So did I misunderstand, did I misunderstand? Because and, and, and maybe I am, I just thought it was interesting because in one of the proposals, it kept the, it kept the city-appointed board, but that had a very separate and different function of the foundation and the foundation would continue the day-to-day. It was more of like a fundraising marketing board, which I thought was an interesting concept. Uh, not, not to take anything away from the foundation. It, it, it just seemed to me in that proposal that it, it did create another board, but they weren't competing in duties. It was like almost a support. Am I misunderstanding?
So one of, no, you're not misunderstanding, but one of the things that we did discuss today about increasing the amount of people on the board would be specific for that. One would be for fundraising, one would be for um artifact finding. One, and they would have a specific duty by increasing the board to seven, they would accommodate those requirements.
The foundation board.
The foundation board.
Uh, in the other.
Yeah. So by removing the holes, the second board, the foundation board would and they would, those, those members and board members would be voted on by the museum board and committee and all of them as a whole, everybody that has a voting right to that. So they would vote on it together who would be appointed to it. And then they would let the liaison at the time know and that's it would come to us and we'd congratulate them. And so it, but it would be specific to things like that and they will, they will do plan to advertise within the community that they're looking for a board member that has sort of these qualifications. So it would be them doing all the footwork for their board members and voting on them and it, it just not us because you do a lot there and I promise all of us combined don't know a harsh portion of what they do there. So it's it's only logical for them to decide who was on their board for the needs that they have.
So first of all, Lisa, I agree with you. I'm, I think these are amazing volunteers. I think that everything you said is, is spot on. Uh, so thank you, all of you guys for your amazing efforts in creating what is a wonderful museum. As an elected representative, though, I, I do believe that we have a significant contribution to the museum. And as an elected official, I have responsibility for the taxpayers' money. And anytime we are investing you know, thousands upon thousands of dollars, I, I think that gets you a spot on any foundation board, on any board throughout the world. If you're putting in a hundred thousand dollars into a board, you will usually get at least one seat on whatever foundation that is. I don't think that's unreasonable.
No, I, I agree. I don't think that's unreasonable at all. And, and I, you know, my understanding is we have a liaison and have always had a liaison from the city council serving uh with the museum and, and maybe it comes down to that they have a vote.
Uh, that's all I'm asking.
Voting member on the boards, yeah.
That's all I'm asking for is.
I think that's reasonable.
It is.
I agree.
Reasonable.
So I, I So I, I would like to see that we, we do have a member on the foundation. Because I also think that we as political leaders have a. An interest in preserving that history, both the history that has taken place and the history that is evolving right in front of us. And I want to make sure that we have someone over there that can help with that. Um, so I do think we, we need to make sure that, uh, we, we have someone there just because of. I, I want to be the city that invests in the museum. I also believe, um, when it comes to the curator, since it is a public, uh, it is a city employee. Um, if there is ever, and I hope there never is, uh, a conflict, I think everyone needs to understand that. As a city employee, they answer to the city.
So it'd be Cresta would be there.
And I think that's it would be the, the managing supervisor.
And they would be as a, as a consultant to the museum board, the liaison as a.
Yeah.
Which was detailed in there.
And curator is a consultant.
Yeah. And I think that other level of accountability comes in the form of the draft MOU that identified what the annual report looks like. Cause we've always enjoyed the annual reports, but it's, but it's been just kind of wherever you guys have felt that, you know, might be appropriate for us to learn about at the time. But these were a set number of metrics that help us kind of gauge. Yeah, you know, viewership and where they're coming from and all that, which might be really important for us to understand, you know, the dynamics that are at play. So it can be just in addition to what you guys are sharing, the few metrics that the curator can be working on. And, um, I think that that would help me feel comfortable with it.
I agree.
Um, so I guess you were saying city council. So do we want, and do we want it to be a city council member? Do we want it to be someone appointed by the city council?
I think it should be one of the city council members because we already have. But we've, we've set a precedence already of liaison and Jen I know is very connected with it and she's attended all the meetings. And so I, I think, I think a member of the city council should continue to be liaison as well as, uh, serve on their board.
Should, should it all, should it have to be a city council member or should we have the option to have it be a city?
Well, it's like, just like, like mosquito abatement, we have a liaison that goes to that. And as a voting member of that board or any of the other boards that we have where we have a liaison who's a voting member, it would just be like the rest of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, if you introduce that it could be, then you go, okay, now who decides?
Then who decides and how is that gonna take place? Yeah.
But I think. So I think to me, it sounds like we're saying repeal the ordinance and address these items we just discussed through the MOU.
I would agree.
Is that? Um, let's see, I wanted to see if there's anything else I, cause I've been, um, so we talked about. We would, so we, we needed to figure out whether the curator is full time or part time. I think that would largely depend on the hours of operation. Are we willing to tie the hours of operation to part time versus full time? But I agree that, um, while I understand the curator has a lot more to do than just give tours of museum. I do still feel that is one of the primary functions. And I want to make sure that as the. Person in charge of making sure taxpayer dollars are spent in the best possible way. I do think that's worth bringing up and discussing as if, if we're gonna increase the hours of operation, then I'm okay with full time. But if it's gonna remain less than 30 hours, I can't support a full time curator.
And let me just chime in here and, and remind us that. Part time does not mean only 20 hours. You can be a part time employee and work 29 hours or 30 hours. You can be full time at 40 hours, but that also can go beyond that. So. In interest of the hours, we're not dictating that. They would be without a curator for part of those 25 hours. We may set the rate according to the hours of operation.
Yeah. And I'm good with that. I just need to make sure that, again, the taxpayer money is being spent in the best possible way. So I guess I'd like.
I don't, I don't think we can control their hours of operation. But we, if that's going to be those hours of operation, this is what we can offer you a curator for. Uh, but the hours of operation is that's, it's up to them to decide when they're going.
Yeah. He's just saying let.
Totally agree.
Reflect what they're choosing.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
And I think that'll be up to us, right? When we are hiring and we can say, here's what we're willing to do and this is what's expected. And if, and go from there. It can always be that if, if it comes down to, we need to increase hours and they need to increase the time that the curator needs to be there. We can always change that job description. But maybe for now we start with part time up to 29 hours and then go from.
I would probably say honestly like three quarter.
Yeah, that's about your 30 hours.
Yeah, 30 hours at least.
Well, I mean, if the, if the museum was open 25 hours, that would only give them four hours of any other work.
Yeah.
Well, I, I do feel like the curator.
That ties them pretty tight.
I don't think the museum is, is constantly full of, of people. I think the curator, even when the museum is open, they have time to work on.
Well, not all, well, see, here's the thing, but they also like the school, when they take the schools there, they take, usually do book those during closed hours. So they open museum for that. So that revolves around all those people who call to schedule, just their open hours when somebody is always there is listed. But doesn't mean there's not somebody always there. So that's when walk in is usually they'll do like ton, they have a bunch of scheduled classrooms getting ready to come through there. Right. So it's, but it's during the hours that aren't listed, like that they're normally open.
Yeah.
So they're actually there pretty much time.
Um, if, if the council is gonna, uh, discuss between full time and part time, something that might be helpful to know is that. Um, 29 hours per week is, is the maximum for, for part time. Okay. Above that, federal law will require us to provide medical benefits, not essentially full time at that point.
I think they would be, they would be working more than 29 hours.
All right. So we, just to move us forward, what points do we have agreement on that we could make a motion on tonight?
Seth, you wanna rock that one back?
Well, I was just saying, um, the first option that's in the packet, which is to repeal the ordinance. I think that's, that's option A. Is that correct? Agree.
Yep. A warrant, one warrant proposal.
I think it's a scratch here, just make a list of what we're planning to do.
So I just want to, um, clarify one thing. If, if the council's wanting to repeal the ordinance altogether, doing away with the museum and cultural board. One thing I might mention is the foundation's a separate. Board, and so they would have to be in agreement with.
So we couldn't set any parameters for them.
They'd have to be in agreement with.
And we don't know.
Liaison or what.
Well, I brought that list with me because we had a meeting today and that's why they're here.
Okay. So what are you telling us are the agreeable terms?
That they, they would be willing to go to seven people with the parameter of that. So the new people would be for, someone would be specific for, uh, fundraising. Someone would be specific for, um, artifact finding. Um, that the day to day operations are done by the museum, the folks at the museum. The curator is hired and paid by the city, so answers to Cresta and acts as a consultant to the foundation. And they could do, control their own hours within the foundation and all the artifacts remain theirs and all the rest of the things.
So if, if we repeal that, then we can't have a, we can't have a city council member on that board.
So that they, they.
That would be adding.
They would have, they, they would have to, that's where the.
It would be the.
MOU would come in.
Yeah, that's an MOU.
That as one of the conditions of the MOU, if they're agreeable to that.
Okay. So, so an example of that would be, um, the city would offer the services of the curator. Um, and the foundation board would agree that one of those seven. On their board is appointed by the city council.
Right.
But they would have to agree to that.
Yeah, I'm.
So.
And then as far as that MOU.
I agree to that.
And, and.
Over the maintenance to the lab and.
Sure. Uh, and then if, 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 so if they don't agree, right, then, then you don't necessarily have to provide the curator.
Okay. So with that understanding, where do we land?
So I guess all we landed on is we are not going to do our own board is all we can do tonight.
Well, no, we can do the repeal and, uh.
That's, I guess that's what I mean, not doing a work session feeling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then everything else would have to be handled through negotiations of the MOU with, with the foundation.
That is correct.
So I'll see it at a work session.
Interesting.
See draft.
Yep. Just, there is an MOU that showed up a couple of hours ago, but I have not fully digested it.
Me either. I apologize. I only just learned of that, that folder a couple of hours ago.
Okay. So what I'm understanding is you'd like to make a motion on the ordinance. And you would like to make, see a memorandum of understanding discussion at the work session.
And, uh, ordinance repealed.
That's.
That, that's what that first part is.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Okay. So I'll need a motion for the first part. And I absolutely am moving forward with the MOU discussion for the next work session.
Okay. So I move that we. Hmm, repeal, repeal ordinance 20, no.
You got this.
No, I moved that, can I say I moved that we approve ordinance 2023 dash 17? Because that is the language.
Option B, she said.
Actually, I don't mean to be difficult. Can you actually read that out? Because the ordinance that we have for that number, um, is a little bit different. The ordinance that we have repealing it is one of the options that I put in that folder that was not in the actual packet. Huh?
I did. Yeah. Good luck Seth.
Okay. So I move. That we. Repeal the existing museum and cultural board ordinance. Is that adequate? No.
I think you gotta read the proposed ordinance 2023 to 17B.
That's, there's like so many.
It's not on a page Seth, hold on one second.
Okay. Yeah. So we could.
Are you in the?
Option me on the agenda?
No.
Oh.
Are you in the teams folder?
I can be in the team's folder. Okay. And is it?
Got it open.
It's called 2023 ordinance repealing. Um, Syracuse City.
Municipal code.
Municipal code. Um, so if you'll just read that long title that's at the very top in bold. Once you get to it.
Uh, do you have it open Jordan?
Yeah. You want me to go?
Go for it. I can't, I'd have to find it.
So I would like a motion that we. Uh, repealing Syracuse City municipal code, chapter 3 dot 40 relating to the museum and cultural board and authorizing staff. Enter into a contract for the use and management of the Syracuse regional museum with the Syracuse museum foundation.
It was literally right.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, motion passes. We will now move on to presentation of cost estimates for fire station number 32, the construction project. Aaron, would you bring us up to speed on where we are with that?
Yes, thank you. Uh, as you know, we've had several conversations about the fire station number 32. We are at the point of the process now after discussions with Cirque Construction and with Gallery Architects. To move towards, working towards the bond resolution. So they've provided cost estimates. And the cost estimates from Cirque are based off of a project. That they're currently working on in Utah county. So they feel, what they've relayed to us, that they feel pretty confident that these are, these estimates were off of bids that they've had over the last couple of weeks. And, uh, I've provided that in the packet. Uh, for the cost estimate, so. That's where we're at. There's also some other options in there, uh. To change some things up that we discussed previously, but I'll kind of open it up to questions. I really don't know where to go from here with this, so I'll just answer questions. And then we've also got Brody and Steve.
We, the total cost estimate is in the, and this is estimate, not final bid or contract. But falls where? For the public.
Right. So the bond amount, uh, in the packet, the bond amount of 11 million, 476,000 and 877 dollars.
Okay. Council, discussion on the size of that bond, the uses of that bond, whether we are, need to look into other places.
I, I think it makes sense. Um, one thing I, I did was curious about is how important are fast driving doors in the back of the, on the back of the.
Right. So I would actually recommend we remove that, uh, the fast rise doors on the back. Usually the fast rise doors are for exiting, we currently don't have them. And it's, uh, our doors take about 24 seconds to open right now. And we're talking about minutes to get out, fast ride just doors will open in two to three seconds.
I, I would rather save the money and retrofit our existing fire station than spend it on this one where, again, you're not, usually not going out the back door to go to a fire. So.
So to be clear, you're saying you keep them on the front, on the.
Definitely on the exit.
But not on the.
I want those guys out of that building as fast as they can. So it may be my house on fire.
So suggestion, if I understand correctly and I'm just.
You get my point, right?
I'm just trying to clarify. You would keep the amount in, but you would put the fast track doors on the front of our current fire station. And so that we had fast track doors on both.
That sounds like what he said. Yeah.
Yes, let's do that.
I'm just trying to be clear, folks.
I would agree with that.
That, that is definitely an option to retrofit that I don't let the costs are to retrofit the front door state to our current station. But also keep in mind, we have six front doors.
That leads me to.
That's option. Yeah. But I think only four of the ones on our current ones.
Use the one, well, let's retrofit the ones that are most used.
Basically it's just to remove it.
This leads me to the question of. If we remove those doors to retrofit them to a better product that is safer and it expedites our time. Can we reuse the product we have on the old station, maybe for rear doors? So that we don't waste that because they're perfectly functional right now.
That's a good idea.
That is a great question. And if the measurements work out, I'm sure that we could make that work.
We're still in design phase, we could make.
Absolutely.
Cycle.
Yeah. We're, we're at the point in the process that they're ready to start with construction documents and moving forward. So we're kinda.
So.
At a standstill.
Yeah. So based on that, then I think that's something we want to do on the side, have a discussion about whether we can repurpose those. But then take option three is what it sounds like in the packet here.
You're saying remove them from this and we'll just save the money and.
And then have that discussed.
Handle that separately.
Okay.
That would be a separate budget item in the future.
Other items within the discussion that you'd like to discuss whether they should be in or out.
I think that's the only one that I.
I think every.
I feel like would be.
Fairly essential.
Everything else needs to be there.
Uh, finishing an offices and training room is only going to get more expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is not a voting item. This is just presentation of where we're at.
Yep.
It will be a future voting item, but I'm glad we covered it. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thanks chief.
Mayor.
Brody.
Yes.
Um, yeah, just so the, the council's aware, we'll, we'll bring this back to the work session in August with the financing, um, package from Zion's bank. Uh, from our financial advisors.
To vote in, in September.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Cool.
All right. Item number 10 regarding, uh, secondary water operations and supply. Uh, we had asked Robert, um, if he would give us a report. Last year we had many reports in a drought year where it was a great deal of concern. At this point, we had not discussed it a lot this year because we did have adequate supply for the regulations that we have. So Robert, if you would give us an update, please.
Yeah, certainly. So what we discovered after taking Bluff Pond offline, that's been decommissioned now. Uh, Bluff Pond acted that reservoir, that was actually our first original reservoir in the system from 1984. Uh, it, it was centralized, it acted, uh, in a way to can keep pressures, uh, sustained through the central and northwest, uh, part of the system. With that offline and, uh, with the fact that we only have two reservoirs in operation. Uh, what we've learned was that the northwest quadrant of the city was experiencing low pressures. Uh, without us realizing it, because our tank pressure was reading just fine. Uh, after looking into it and doing some research, we, um. We ended up installing a valve on a transmission line up at the Freeport Center. Uh, site on February 28th. And, um, throttled that down so that it doesn't short circuit to the tank and falsely give us, uh, uh. Pressure reading that shows it's, it's fine. So after installing a valve, i- it forces most, the majority of water down, i- instead of going down analog drive. Uh, forces it down 700 south, which compensates for bluff pond not being there. Um, and, and with that being the main, uh, transmission line for delivery. Pressures have improved, um, significantly. So, uh, the dirty water, we're still, uh, flushing out areas of the system. And we're working with some of the residents to give us notification on a weekly basis. So that's been going really, really well. Looking into the future a little bit, um, one of the things that we're lacking is the ability to really see what pressures are doing throughout the system. All we have is this one site, which is the tank. It would be nice to have something, uh, like pressure stations throughout the city. I'm not talking several, but maybe half a dozen, maybe we start with a half a dozen, see what that looks like. And then maybe we end up, uh, with, uh, a dozen, you know, to get six more in, in the future or something. And this is not something I'm asking for right now. And if it's something that you'd like to do, we can, uh, look into it, but we did look. And this is not something I'm asking for right now. If it's something that you'd like to do, we can uh look into it. But we did look into costs. Uh, it's basically the cost of a a service line tapping the main. We don't want to put it on an existing service that runs uh water periodically through it because the dynamic pressure uh changes is different than a static pressure. We want to get a good static pressure reading. So it would be just basically installing a service line with a pressure gauge that would read remotely um to uh like a cell phone and we can pick up uh different pressure stations throughout the city and kind of forecast problems before they actually become recognized by residents. Then we can proactively get to it and and check it out, see what's going on, whether it's flushing or fixing something. So so certainly something that we're exploring. Um, we got a cost of about somewhere between forty to fifty thousand dollars to put in maybe like six. Uh, we the we just spread it maybe throughout the city, maybe uh three spread north of Antelope, three spread uh south of Antelope, you know, and and get a good uh vibe. So that's.
I love the idea. Could we ask for a uh more uh detailed plan at a future work session, meaning you'd give us some suggestions of where these would be located and maybe a estimate from our own in in-house department of what the total cost would be. And then we could talk about whether we'll move forward because I think it's a great idea. We need to know the details of what, how it would impact. Do we have the land that we would need or is it in the right locations? So could we ask that you prepare that for a future?
Yeah, certainly. You bet.
Right.
Not a problem. I think that's anytime you can get more data on the actual performance of the system. I think it'll help us make better decisions and hopefully provide the service to the community that we are promising.
Technology really makes life easier, don't it?
Sometimes.
Yeah.
So that wasn't an ask tonight. So thank you for coming up with a great suggestion, but if we could go into deep in another one, thank you.
So can I ask one follow-on question?
Yes, absolutely.
So um I know in the past few weeks, how are we doing right now in that northwest quadrant? So are they, are they seeing improved results? Or are there other areas of the city that we still need to focus in on?
Uh, a lot is, I can go off of what uh phone calls and fix it to come in.
That's probably your best source, right?
Yeah, they've reduced uh drastically. So I don't know if you council members are hearing anything.
I'm hearing good things. I'm getting positive feedback. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that you guys reverse flushed uh or what's the term for is that?
Directional flushing.
Directional flushed neighborhoods. Um, one thing that I think is important that I learned in the, in this whole process is that although um there was not a lot of water going through there because of that pipe sitting pretty empty and everything, there was a lot of buildup that was sitting there isolated and getting harder and calcified or whatever. And then when you get, and then when the pressure's back again, it just inundated some of the neighborhoods with, I mean, some of these guys look like a sandbox in their
Yeah.
in their own commercial filters. And I mean, it was pretty bad. So um some of the blessings of having this water and uh newfound pressure and all that kind of created some, some new challenges, but based on years of drought. And these guys did so much. They found, you guys found uh some of the valves along Antelope weren't fully opened. Um, and when we say northwest Syracuse, it's kind of the the old northwest Syracuse, right? It's really almost.
Alright, so north of Antelope, rest of two thousand.
So it's not the the new far west Syracuse. We're talking Canterbury Park kind of area. So.
Well done, Robert. Thank you.
Yeah.
Really good. Questions or comments?
No.
Okay, I'm going to move us on. Um, the next item on our agenda is uh end of meeting, public comment. And this is the same rules as the previous uh beginning of meeting, public comment. Anybody would like to come forward? You have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close public comment. I'll move us on to.
I think we have someone ready to stand up.
Sorry. I thought I gave us a moment, so.
Yeah, you have, you have to build up the the courage to stand up. I get that.
Especially when you're the first one, you know?
If no one's first, then they just go first.
So what information would you like?
I need you to state your name and place of address.
Mary Knight, four hundred south, two thousand west Syracuse.
And then your comments, three minutes.
Oh, well, actually, I would really like to ask a question. Where is the new fire station going to be?
Okay, so.
Do we know?
Public, it is not a Q and A.
Okay.
But because it's on the agenda, I can tell you it will be just south of Jensen Park.
Okay. Sorry.
If it it just for public comment sake, if you ask us a question that's not on the agenda, we really can't answer.
Okay, so I understand that you just tabled the community reinvestment area, correct?
Yes.
So that means this other agenda is null and void, correct?
Um. I don't.
Sorry, there goes a question again.
That is a good question.
Mayor, that's the item that we recommended, holding the public hearing. Um, but then also continuing that public hearing to the September business meeting.
Okay.
So Mary, they'll still have the meeting.
Still hold.
So it'll be tonight, but no action will be, should be.
Okay. Next question, um. I'm a little disappointed that the squatter bailed out after four hours and is back in my neighborhood. I would sort of like that to be addressed.
Uh, this is.
And.
I'm sorry, that's.
Miss Night, you, you and I can talk about that. Okay.
I I think that's all I had to say. Does anybody else need to say anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight.
Any others?
Okay, one more.
Forward if you'd like.
Have you made that enough to me? I used to work for the city. I used to live in Syracuse and now volunteering, now I'm retired at the museum. So thank you for your discussion. I just want to say thank you for your help. And on Ken's sessions, I live in West Point. I don't know if you need my address or not.
Thank you.
Any others? Hey, I will close public comment. Uh, we will move into council announcements. Jen, we'll start with you.
Um, besides our cops and dogs event, that was a huge success. It was over like five hundred hot dogs we passed out in juice boxes and stuff. It was amazing. A couple of you were there.
You kept running out of hot dogs. Come on.
The what we did run out of hot dogs. We need to get more. It was amazing. Um, besides that, I don't think that there's really anything going on. Every the farmers are happy, so that's a good thing. Most of them. So that's.
I'm kind of sad the corn's not done yet.
I know. They're not yelling at me lately, so I feel like it's a good thing.
I'm.
At least once a week I get yelled at by them and it's, I haven't heard nothing like three weeks. So that's a solid. Um, that's about it. Yeah, I don't really have anything.
Jordan.
Going on.
Okay, um, I I talked to several of you. Um, just one thing I'd like to see in a future, Jen, I've already talked to a lot of you is just we need to look at our urban camping. Um.
That's on the agenda for, uh, now I will say this. Uh, Jordan put in a request for an agenda item. I reached out to staff. The suggestion from staff is that it would not be ready for the meeting in two weeks, so it would be on the following work session. That is because they've asked for more time to research the ordinance.
Okay, so I'm good with that. I just want to make sure that we are looking at it and.
My original request was that it was ready in two weeks, but staff has asked for additional time. So if you're okay with that, we will be on the September work session.
I can totally live with that. I just, as long as we we all kind of know, and I can talk to you guys kind of um about, uh, just talk to that in the future.
Okay.
Um, the other thing um I want to say to all of the uh the haunters out there, um, we are, we are doing our Halloween contest, decorating contest again. And I'm super excited. Um, I have more on that, but Cresta keeps calling me and teasing me with cool new things that we're looking at doing. So I'm super excited. Um, but yeah, Halloween is coming, so get ready for that. Um, another thing that I would like to have clarified is in one of our previous council meetings, there were discussion that somehow being annexed into the city would somehow um remove green belt status.
It's not.
I don't think that.
Yeah.
Talked about that in here.
Federal thing.
No.
That was something that someone mentioned on.
So someone mentioned, but I had someone talk to me that they, they said they they don't want to get annexed into the city because it would affect their green.
My properties in the city and I'm got green belt.
That's what I wanted to actually say is is um
That's.
Is just make sure that everyone, that there is some clarity there that uh an annexation does not mean you're no longer green belt. So I I'm agreeing with all of them.
Yeah.
Um, just someone brought that up and I just want to make sure that it's clear.
Not using it for agricultural purposes. They'll take your green belt.
Yes.
You have to prove productive.
So anyway, that was the last thing.
Crazy thing that we've heard from the.
Yeah.
Agree. I just want to make sure that was clear. Um, other than that, I think that's everything I had.
Bring up anything on that property that should that we received and hope and carry on.
Yeah, so so I I've talked to um Brody and several of the staff. That that's why I'd like to talk about that in the future, Jen. We can bring it up then.
Okay, so I went to a West Davis uh Chamber of Commerce networking event and we had a great connection with a lot of business people. In fact, three of the members of the business area want to be involved in the, in the illumination event, which as I have mentioned before, is coming up. It'll be September ninth from five to nine thirty. We have Madeline Page and Ben, I want to say Kar, KJAR.
There.
Thank you. And eleven after the weekends will also perform. It's, it's, we are having, getting a lot of buzz. We, we're in the media and everything now, so Syracuse will be gathering. And we want uh everybody around the Founders Park area to be aware that there will be fireworks. We'll be taking around flyers the week before to prepare and and ju- just notify. And then here at the city building, we'll have an air plug kit if anybody is looking for that. I'll be bringing those in a couple of weeks. Um, and then I went to the island for the archery range and I shot and I hit the foot of a troll and it was awesome. So.
The foot of the troll?
There's a true, there was a troll out there in the between the toes. So there was that. And I missed most of the others, but twinkle toe. Anyway, that was great. So if you have a chance to go out there, that's a wonderful wonderful place and they've made it beautiful and you can bring your own supplies and just go shooting. So that's it.
So.
Um, yeah, so I talked to you guys about it a few weeks ago, but um the CTC is still uh sitting vacant without a coordinator. Uh, but they are interviewing right now, so that's, that's exciting. There's two new grant opportunities that may impact our our citizens. There's uh Teens Lifting Teens Grant that's coming up pretty soon and they're hoping to get some uh some support from somebody who gets hired soon to help get this filled out. But um it's an evidence-based program to help uh some of our youth. Um, and then there's Parents Empowered again, and uh that's kind of that traditional billboard ad we see when we're driving down the road a lot. But uh, so um, yeah, that's what's going on with CTC.
Okay.
Oh. Yes, I do have something. Um, uh, the planning commission uh at the last meeting was discussing as they were getting some information on the the master traffic plan that's being looked at. Um, the the they came up or they started discussing um traffic calming measures. And we have some, we have some verbiage and some plans that's very loose and things like that. Um, and they, they feel that our, a a lot of our traffic calming issues or measures are reactive, meaning a development goes in, citizens complain, and then we come back and 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 try and implement a a solution. So they're wondering from counts, they would like to with staff maybe examine code and see if it makes sense to put something in code that, you know, gives options in code for traffic calming measures. And they just wanted, before they spend an enormous amount of time on doing that, they just wanted to maybe check and see if we'd be interested in in hearing their recommendations.
Are you talking about speed bumps?
No, most speed, among other things.
Cause didn't you just write an article on speed bumps?
Okay.
No, we we talked.
So no, this is um, so you, a couple of things I'll fill in. So Planning Commission um received a first read report from a s- traffic impact study engineer. This is something that we will eventually see. Um, I wasn't even aware it was happening. We do this uh every five years and nobody asks anybody. We just do it. So um, the first read brought up some questions about what we should be doing uh for future traffic uh mitigation as far as speeding and and access. Um, because of that, there was some discussion about what we do have as suggestions formally in city code, and we really don't have much in city code. So the question for council would be should it start with planning commission to start talking about what code we should put for uh city code for traffic calming?
I would revert to the people who know something about traffic.
Well, we have an actually, one of the newer planning commissioners that wrote it on last year is a traffic engineer by trade. So.
Then.
Yeah.
And yeah. He knows way more than I do.
Uh, which is why I put him on there. I didn't know him previously, but he has so much knowledge.
And he's, yeah, he's very interested in taking a closer look at it.
Yeah.
I I because of his expertise, I wouldn't mind them starting it and making you know, hey, this is what we think. And then, I mean, ultimately it will end up in front of us if it comes to.
Absolutely.
Decision, but th- they just want to know, you know, if if we're interested in.
I'm good with this.
I would agree with them starting with it because they clearly have the knowledge.
Is everyone okay if I let them know?
Okay, I got three head nods to go. And yes, um, my article this month was about speed bumps because I have received so many calls. A- as soon as somebody speeds in a neighborhood, the first thing they do seems to be call and tell me they need a speed bump in front of their home. Um, we've all discussed speed bump many times. I thought maybe I was getting so many calls, it was worth putting out there our position on speed bumps and alternatives to speed bumps. So that's why that came about.
Like more trees.
As long as they keep semi trucks in mind. Tell them to make sure they keep semi trucks in mind when they do that.
Okay.
Calming.
Other things to bring forward.
Next for roads.
Is uh, we talked in this meeting about approving the CRA. Most of those are approved now. We got final approval from school district. We got final approval from the sewer board. We do not have final approval, though we have uh presented so that we can get on the agenda of mosquito abatement.
That's Thursday.
That's Thursday. And I'm just passing along, he asked that you attend in person. I know that's optional. Sorry. He asked.
Of course, he would ask you to ask me and I'll just be like, hey, can you come in person?
Well, he said, you've got, if you're on the agenda, can you ask her? So I.
Yeah. I'll be there. I'll be there. Noah, you going with me? Where's Noah?
All right. Uh, actually, I have to be at sewer board at the exact same time. So Noah will be there with you.
Fantastic. We have pizza.
Okay, um, I also want to put forth that auditions for Susical Junior, which will be in the fall is uh this Saturday and call for audition times. That's still open. The other thing that I wanted to bring up and I sent an email to all of you about is this year in place of a city employee summer party, we are doing a city uh employee Olympic Games, which is got some different events that we're combining our wellness activity time with a couple of events. Um, I took on the task of some of the creative elements. So I just need to know, I sent an email and said, I'm inviting every one of you to do one of the quests. If you don't want to, just tell me now and I'll have somebody else get that done. So are you in for a quest?
I didn't read the quests.
It was a long email, but I read it.
Okay.
As long as I don't have to walk, you can assign me.
You're in.
You remind us.
Okay, so the deadline for that is by August twentieth. I would just need your clue. This is where we put out a clue and during their daily jobs, if they can find the magic idols that you've provided in a place in the.
I mean, I'll do it because it sounds cool. I just haven't read it and forgot all about it.
Jordan, you're in. Okay, so good. That's awesome. What's great is that all five of you will do one of the five quests for the days that we're going. And that means that.
I didn't read it either.
Random and different, which is great. Um, the other item that uh I'm taking care of is the lunch hour Apollo thirteen event, which is uh this is an engineering challenge we're putting forth to for development of employees. They get a box of random items. They are all the same, just like Apollo thirteen. They have a mission, has to do something. If you want to supply some items, I need five exact same items for the box, but I'm gathering random items now. This is my I challenge there. So thank you for that. It it look, there's a lot of excitement already. We had a meeting today about uh planning for this. There's a lot of people excited about the interaction and team building being combined with summer party. So it's not just a here, go eat pizza. It's, we're actually going to do some team building. So yeah, there will be pizza, but we're going to do some team building with the wellness time.
I like pizza.
Okay, those are all. Now we're going to take a motion to adjourn from this meeting and then we'll, we have another.
I move.
Okay, moved and.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, I'm now going to call to order the Syracuse Special Redevelopment Agency meeting that we have scheduled tonight. The Syracuse Special Redevelopment Agency meeting that we have scheduled tonight. We will begin with a public hearing. It sounds like we can't finalize this because we're going to need to extend it for some, uh, better noticing. We want to make sure everybody understands, but just as a quick review, this is about an area. That we're using as a tax increment area to help, uh, provide some of the infrastructure. Needed to open this up to business. Uh, this is a business viable area along one ninety-three. And it's kind of business non-viable because of the UDOT requirements for creating an entrance there, so. That's what we're doing. Um, I'm going to open public hearing. If anybody has any questions specific to this. We will try to answer them. I don't know if we'll have all the answers, but as I said, this will be extended, so. I declare public hearing open. Is anybody here for that? Come forward. I'll need your name and, uh, place of residence and then you have up to three minutes to. Give us your feedback.
My name's Sean Helm. I live at six eighty-three South, um, twenty-nine, twenty-five West. So my house, the backyard. Looks out onto this piece. Um, I'm just curious, you said, oh, for question. One of the things that drew me to Syracuse was the. Like he says, a community that's very bound, rounded in farming and agriculture. And I'm curious how that. Sense of community is going to be preserved when we start popping up in Russia.
Okay, so I'll, I'll handle the first part of your question there and just say that. Every landowner has a right to sell their land and. They're not under any obligation to preserve its current use and we can't as a city regulate that. The only way for anyone to control the lu- use of land is to own it. And then you control it. So, uh, a large portion of this land that's within the CRA. Is owned by, uh, the LDS Church. They have indicated that they would like to divest themselves of that in the future. So it would be for sale in the future, not today, but. Um, whoever wants to buy that will be able to apply for acceptable uses. And that's the same with the privately held land within the space. Whoever owns it legally can apply. We do not have control. I know that there are a lot of people in the city who said, how can you keep the farms? We can't force a land use legally. That, that's not within the boundaries of, of the law.
Right, I, I understand that. Um, we have a family farm in Stroud, Wyoming, so I understand that part. My question follow-up of that is. Why then is the city tax dollars or making this? To support the LDS Church and their divestment of that property?
It's not. That what we're suggesting is, is that if we create a taxing zone. Future tax dollars that have not been collected, because this is almost tax-free right now. If this zone is created, any future uses from future landowners. The tax, a portion of that tax, and in the proposal, it would be sixty percent of the collectible taxes. For up to, I think fifteen years, could be diverted to pay for the infrastructure needs. Now, this is not a guarantee, it's not a done deal, and if nobody ever buys it or ever applies for anything, there is no new tax. This would just be the ability to redeploy some of that towards the needs of the property. Which could include the needs to make an access road onto one ninety-three. As I was explaining, and I take just a minute here to, to be clear, because I know that this has come up a lot in the city. Why would we not require a developer to pay for all of this by themselves? As I explained this at the county and also at the school district and the sewer board, all the places I've already visited. To explain why we're asking for help. Uh, UDOT owns I, uh, you know, State Road one ninety-three. And they have requirements for that because it is considered highway traffic. Uh, again, highway, state road, not necessarily a freeway, but. It, it has an augmented standard, which means that if anybody ever exits that road. They would require us to put in a quarter mile, uh, acceleration, deceleration lane. And their standard is eighteen inch reinforced concrete. No road in the city requires that. Because we're not a highway. And so that makes it impossible for somebody to. Justify that cost and build a business in that area. And we want to allow that they could build a business in that area if they so desire, because the city does need. Economic dollars from businesses rather than, I, I can tell you who could afford this and this is just me speaking randomly. Um, there are lots of housing developers that if we allowed them to do multifamily housing, that. Density now justifies them spending that money. But this would be to allow a business, our city needs jobs. We have virtually, as I presented in this. And is in the packet for your.
Yeah, I've read the packet, all hundred.
Yeah, we have very few jobs coming into the city. And to be sustainable so that we don't tax our people on their property tax for all these things, we need some businesses to help divert some of that.
And also verification there. Okay, thank you.
I would also add that, that one of the things we look for is to make sure that we have good connectivity throughout the city.
That's correct.
And so wi- with that infrastructure, it also allow us to improve the east-west, um. Roads to help people be able to migrate through or navigate through the city. So. Um, I think one of the things in this area would be the twenty-five hundred west extension.
So that's, you know, over time.
One of the things that could be looked at.
Over time, there will be connections through this very large parcel because we are forcing people to the outskirts of it. If we have, we have a master plan for traffic, says we have to have a road somewhere in here. Doesn't say where it has to be and we are not declaring that today. But we need some kind of connectivity, otherwise we are going to overwhelm the roads we have and that slows down first responders and. And others that is concerning. So anyway, others, you do want to comment? Okay, are there any other comments for public hearing? Please come forward. State your name.
My name's Vaughn Jones. I don't live within the city, but I do own and principally broker of marketing and real estate. I'm the one trying to sell five of these properties on two thousand. We've been through this with Wright Development, where you remember that. I'm actually personally grateful for this. The width of those lots is so narrow. That multiple businesses have come in, but they have to buy two and three lots to get the width, but they have all this depth. They're spending millions and millions of dollars to just buy the land that they don't need. And so I'm kind of grateful for this, to see this, because we do need that help. We need that, that ability to use that tax money. Especially on genetically used property to build that road. That has been the killer to be able to sell these properties.
Yeah, and if we have a road, that makes those interiors more accessible to other businesses and they could be subdivided.
Well, if we could put that road, we now have two corners.
Yeah.
And those are valuable properties. So I'm grateful for this. Anything to help with this? I'm all for it, uh, because these are extremely difficult to sell. So, thank you.
Any others interested in commenting? And this is a hearing, you can ask a question about this subject if you have one.
Mary, come on out.
You're looking like you want to and I don't want to cut you off.
Oh, gosh.
You, you're welcome to.
It's a good idea.
Hopefully he's not zooming in. Okay, I just have a question. When it says twenty-five hundred west, the original letter we got said three thousand west. So can you clarify that?
Yes, I can't, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mary Knight. Four hundred South, two thousand West.
Let me absolutely clarify this. Three thousand would be the west border.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred is the only accessible point that UDOT would allow a road to be produced into this section. So there is no twenty-five hundred today in this section. There is a applicant that would ask for twenty-five hundred to come down. Hmm, about a quarter of a mile into this, so that they could develop along I ninety-three. You're not asking to put it through. We're not asking to put it through at this time. Um, UDOT has predicted that eight, ten years from now, they'd like it to go through. We're not addressing that today, so I just, twenty-five hundred is a possible road location. It is, the, what was in the packet was three thousand and two thousand are the east and west boundaries.
Okay. And then when you talked about having more notices, will we get another letter?
Um, I'm not sure. There's just been a question. Yeah, okay, so yes, we will renotice. So you'll get another notice. It will be about these exact same thing. But apparently there's somewhere, somewhere we didn't quite notice everybody, so.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, Mary, I, I'm noticing it was a technicality, but we want to make sure it's right.
That's, okay, it's fair. Come forward, please.
Michael Hensley, um, five two two South, two thousand West Syracuse. So we are talking about that big block right there, yes. Um, will our zones change as far as properties?
No. No individual zoning changes with this. What this allows us to do is. Gather tax from new development. If, you know, this, so this would be future people. This is not. Nobody who lives there today is affected by this. There's no new taxes. There's no. What it is, is within that boundary, something new. Would take those taxes from the new something and it could be used to help us with infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you.
Was that clear? That was a little bit.
I use hand signals too. It's okay.
All right, sorry. Anyone else? Again, we are just approving an area that whatever happens in the future. Could divert the tax to help support future development. And in this case, we're asking for it to be primarily jobs. And we, we think that's good for the city. All right, without any others, I'm going to close public hearing and now go to the council. Do you have any questions about what this is and is not? I know you've done these before, but I, I've been giving this presentation for a month now, so.
Oh, I've. Read it several times now.
Yes, you, okay. All right, so at this point, staff, we're recommending that we table this so that we can renotice to make sure it was a hundred percent. Plus ten.
We're just asking the council to continue it, not table the decision, but continue it. Um, to the September twelfth date and just to be clear, there's, um, Utah State Code requires very specific language in some of these notices. That was, um.
Okay.
Probably rephrased, but we, we need to use the specific language, um, directly from the code. So that was the technicality.
We want to stay clear on all of that, so.
This is moving it to which meeting, could you say? Okay, so motion to continue to the September business meeting.
Motion and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now I'll take a meet, uh, motion to adjourn from this meeting.
I move.
Moved and seconded. You can take your pick on that one.
I get the move.
All in favor? We are adjourned for this evening. Thank you.